Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Lash and I am the president of the City Club and welcome to this debate today. I'd like to review quickly, if I may, the format because I think we have an exciting program and I'd like to get to it. This program will have several sections. First, each candidate will give a five-minute opening statement. A coin toss was held earlier this week to determine the order of appearance in the debate and the City Club staff asked me that whichever campaign has the coin, would you please return it? Following the opening statements, each candidate will in turn ask three questions of the other. There is a one-minute time period for response to that question. The candidate who asks the question will then have an optional 30-second time period to respond. After the six cross-questions, three from each candidate, questions will be asked from the floor. These questions were submitted in advance of the meeting in writing by City Club members. A special program committee has reviewed and digested these questions and they will be asking those from the floor themselves. These questions are the only questions from the floor which will be allowed. Members of the audience will not be able to approach the microphone and ask a question. The candidates have not seen any of these questions in advance. The candidates will rotate the order of first response, which will be for one minute. The other candidate then has the option of a one-minute response. Following these questions from our program committee members, each candidate will have the opportunity to ask one final question of each other. We will then have three-minute closing statements from each candidate. This meeting is governed by the format I've just described and by the rules of conduct which are displayed on all of your tables. The program will adjourn promptly as usual at 1:15. Now, I'd like to take just a second to introduce each of the candidates. On my far right is County Commissioner Gretchen Cifore. Gee, nobody got that. Never mind. She describes herself as a longtime community activist. Gretchen served in the Oregon State Legislature and was elected to the County Commission in 1984 and re-elected in 1986 and she will give the first statement. Our second statement will come from City Commissioner Bob Koch. According to Bob, he was born in poverty and pulled himself up through hard work and enthusiasm and he is on my far left. Whoa, you guys are gonna have a tough time with this crowd. He served on the Portland Police for 17 years and was elected to the Portland City Council in 1986. Our opening statements will be five minutes each and as I mentioned just a moment ago, Commissioner Cifore will open the debate with her statement. Gretchen?
Thank you. I'm delighted to be here. I would like, despite all the hoopla and focus on me today, I would like to acknowledge that it's my husband's birthday. I seem destined to come to the City Club, uh, Port holes discussing integration. When I first became familiar with the City Club, I was picketing out in front and a long battle, as many of you remember, it took us two years, but we finally celebrated the fifteenth anniversary of the integration of the City Club last year and I spoke to you on that occasion. Today, I'm actually here and want us to recognize that since that last appearance, we have integrated two more clubs in the city of Portland, the University Club and the Arlington Club. And I'm here today to ask for your support in integrating the very last all-male club in Portland, the Portland City Council. I'm also here today because Portland needs strong, effective new leadership as it faces the critical decisions of the nineties. Portland needs leadership in improving public safety, protecting the environment, and reclaiming our neighborhoods. Leadership in improving public safety to me means understanding the complexity of the issue and the ability to get things done. When I think about public safety, I think about a triangle with incarceration and punishment being one point of the triangle. We need to keep focused on the other two points of the triangle, the treatment points where alcohol and drug abuse can get some attention and especially the prevention point where we must keep some focus on the children of today so that we don't have another generation growing up in despair and hopelessness like many of our young people seem to be today. I think we have to focus on the short-term answers which are getting people off the streets that are causing trouble in our community and the long-term answers which are these preventive strategies to help change the way children grow up and feel about themselves. I think another part of public safety involves someone who can get things done. Portland is going to have to implement community team policing soon. When the Housing Authority of Portland needed a community team policing model, they approached the city and found no takers. So, they came to Multnomah County where we were able to sign a contract with them and have a very successful model in Columbia Villa where we're doing an excellent job of reducing the crime and having our sheriffs go door-to-door bicycling around the neighborhoods and I think TriMet drivers and others who have constant contact with the Columbia Villa will attest to the change that has taken place in that community. Team policing works, but it's when we do more than just add additional officers. We must work together to change the values of the Portland Police. Protecting our environment requires leaders who can make clear, tough choices. How do we balance growth and development? How do we protect our natural areas like Sauvignon Island and Forest Park? How do we plan for transportation and housing a decade from now? And how do we encourage recycling? Sometimes it will involve tough choices like banning styrene foam and banning disposable diapers. Finally, we could reclaim our neighborhoods if we have leaders with creative ideas and can pull people together to get things done. I think creative ideas are involving true public-private partnerships like our recent Nehemiah grant that I worked on. We were able to get the banks to provide low and low-interest loans. The county donated 144 vacant abandoned properties. The city donated community development resources and the community is providing the work, the Community Development Corporation in northeast Portland. I think one of my strongest attributes has been my ability to work well with many different people. With these critical choices to be made and these problems that need solving in the next few years, Portland needs the best leadership we can find, people who make a difference. I believe I've made a difference at the legislature and at the county and with your help, I'll make a difference on the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cifore, and then now Commissioner Koch.
Thank you. I want to thank the City Club, me and guests for conducting this semi-annual recruitment drive for the City Club. Although we have come very far along the path of progress to a safe, clean, and productive future and although many categories of crime are down, although we have advanced in our environmental protection enhancement, businesses up, property values rising, and unemployment a near-record low, we must strengthen our resolve to achieve an even better future. We must resolve to do better, to keep the faith with love and respect with our children and our senior citizens, the two most vulnerable and valued members of the Portland family. As recent events have revealed, we must also resolve to listen more and demonstrate more respect for the majority of opinions and wishes of our citizens. We must resolve to keep our attention and direction in accord with mainstream Portlanders. Something unusual happened when I came home last night. I found in my mailbox this letter. It's hand-addressed, obviously, by a very young child. No stamp on it, no return address, and judging by the style and quality of writing, it's written, again, by a very young person. I'd like to read it to you. While you and I might have written this somewhat differently, please bear with me. Dear Bob Koch, when my principal told us about when he saw the governor of New York on the news and he said, "We need more drug-free education," I agree we do because in a few years from now, other people have to learn, so we have to be drug-free kids. Because drugs are not good for you, only the ones our doctor gives us or to you. Signed sincerely, Sam Crawford. Even the youngest of our children recognize that we have a tremendous problem in our society. No matter how quickly we advance in addressing that problem, it still persists. But an exciting thing about this letter is the awareness that exists with the youngsters of our city. We have, in fact, accomplished much even though we have tremendous challenges for the future. The proper scheme of things is state and county providing courts and services, the schools and parents providing the education, the moral strength of character, the city police for the consistent dedicated enforcement. I believe, and I may believe more Portlanders believe, in a zero tolerance to crime. However, the true and final responsibility rests with every citizen in every household in the city of Portland. People need to go to the doorsteps of their homes to stand out in public towards the street and say, "No more, not today, not tomorrow, not in the future, not on my street, my block, my neighborhood, or my city." Zero tolerance for crime. Change is in the air. Many citizens groups have found that I have had the pleasure of working with, were no longer saying what government can do for them, but are now saying, "What can we do together?" Partnerships. I'd like to talk about partnerships, the partnerships I have with the firefighters, the police officers, municipal workers of the city Portland, the bus and light rail employees, the Teamsters, the Portland Board of Realtors, Associated General Contractors, US Bank Corporation, business industrial leaders like American Steel, Schnitzer Investment Corporation, RB Pamplin Corporation, Mort Bishop, owner of Pendleton Woolen Mills, Norm Winningstad, founder of Floating Point, Lattice Semiconductor, Art Wrightell, owner of Wrightell International, Payless Drug Stores, nearly all of Portland's garbage haulers, Jack Burns of Burns Brothers, the founder, Melvin Mark Properties, Louisiana Pacific Corporation, Bill McCormick of McCormick and Schmicks, Northwest Natural Gas, US West Communications, PP&amp;L, many, many others are my supporters in this strong fight for a better future. During the first three-plus years in office, I have made my share of mistakes and achieved my share of successes and both I have learned and gained much wisdom. During the last three-plus years, I have never lost sight of my devotion or my obligation to the people of Portland. Energy enthusiasm and a servant's heart need guidance and partnership. Mine has come from my faith in God, my marriage to the most wonderful woman I have ever known, my loving and supportive parents, and a staff of people who always rise to the occasion of the hard work and energy and dedication. They have my love, my respect, and my everlasting thanks. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Koch. Commissioner Cifore will now ask the first question of Commissioner Koch. He will have one minute to respond and then Gretchen will have thirty seconds for an optional rebuttal. Gretchen?
For 20 years, people all over this country have been struggling with the issue of abortion. I suspect everyone in this room knows where they stand. Where do you stand, Bob?
Well, I certainly know where I stand. After over 20 years of public service and protecting human life in a sworn capacity for the people of this city and others, I stand for protecting innocent life. I do not believe in taking innocent life. I am not untypical in that most Americans in this country today have an uncertainty about where life truly exists in the cycle. I believe that in fact, life begins at birth, but where does it truly exist and where can it stand on its own? And in that case, I think that I'm disappointed and saddened by the extremism of arguments on this issue and what we really need to do is to have a healing of the spirit of America to sit down and resolve these issues and find some common ground so that we can get on with a better life.
Commissioner Cifore, do you have a rebuttal? Commissioner Koch, your question?
Commissioner, you've seen the progress of the transportation planning of this city and I'm always willing to learn. How would you improve upon that process?
I think the first thing is to acknowledge the planning is not un-American and that to have our communities grow and develop in the way that we need them to be in the future, we need a strong, firm commitment to the planning process, to involving all of our citizens and to leaders who will then make tough decisions about where we want to be. I think the future of transportation must be in alternatives to the automobile. Again, I don't believe that is an un-American focus. I believe people are willing to get out of their cars and take mass transit either rail or bus if they are provided with the opportunity. So, I think the systems have to be developed and I'm delighted that the city of Portland is taking such an aggressive role in moving this direction.
Do you have a rebuttal, Commissioner Koch?
No, I think we both agree upon comprehensive and thorough planning on a regional, state, and federal level and we've done that, we continue to do that, and all the council members support that. I do disagree, however, with the statement made by my opponent earlier that if anyone has an expectation of owning a car in the future, they better change their expectation.
Commissioner Cifore, your next question?
You voted for an ordinance prohibiting discrimination based on sexual orientation in city employment. Recently, in the paper, you seem to be distancing yourself from this vote by referring to special privileges. What special privileges have been extended to city employees under this nondiscrimination ordinance?
I'm not aware of any. The question was put to me, would I support a concept that's been forwarded in other parts of the country? And my response was that I am totally and adamantly opposed to any discrimination. However, I always am cautious in granting any special privileges or considerations.
I'm adamantly opposed to discrimination. There is no however qualifying my statement and I believe that we must work together to end it in all forms.
It's great being a... It's great trying to manage a debate where the candidates are ahead of you and I can't even get in the little words that I have here.
We want to get this over.
We both agree that for us, it's just get through this and you folks have a different view on it probably.
I'm out of control, folks. I've gotta have the last word, however. Commissioner Koch, your next question to Commissioner Cifore.
You claimed again and again last year that you had nothing to do with the draft Cifore for council committee because it was illegal for you to begin campaigning before the first of the year. Yet, your husband was a significant financial contributor in the month of September of last year to the draft committee. You yourself said at a political campaign school that you okayed the strategy used by that committee. The behavior shows an attempt to go around the county charter and says that commissioners don't hold one office and campaign for another. How do you justify this rather slick method of ignoring the wishes of the voters?
I think you have misread the county charter. The charter prohibits you from filing for another office. I did not file for this office until the 23rd of January, which was well after the first of the year that allowed it. We also have the only charter prohibiting candidates from running for the full two years before their term and I'm hopeful that the Charter Commission is going to change that. I have never denied that I knew what the draft committee was doing. We folded it into this committee. My husband was involved in it and I certainly knew what their activities were, but I did not violate any of the charter because I did not file for office until January 23rd.
Do you have a rebuttal, Commissioner Koch?
No.
The next question, Commissioner Cifore of Commissioner Koch.
You currently, Bob, have the smallest workload of any commissioner, placing extra bureau assignments on other members of the council. Why should voters think your management will be any more effective if you were re-elected?
Well, I'm very proud of the management of the first three years I've been in office. We've taken great advances in the areas of water efficiency, water conservation, ecological protection, and protection of the Columbia Shlooe. We began out of my office the Clean the Waterways Program in 1987, the recycling program, advances in every one of the bureaus, fine-tuning management style and providing a lower cost to the citizens and saving dollars for the future. So, I can't justify or explain political decisions that under the charter the mayor has the authority to make. I merely recognize and respect them and go forward, do the best doggone job I can.
I believe that this is the crux of the campaign. I think, the issues aside, the issue of management is absolutely essential. We have this form of government where citizens are elected and perform managerial tasks and I think Portland cannot afford to have, in effect, one empty seat on the council.
Commissioner Koch, your final question of Commissioner Cifore.
Fresh in your tax and spend record from the county has included champions such bombs as the real estate transfer tax, which was to solve the problems of the homeless and the public resoundingly voted it down. How do you explain being so far out of touch with what the people feel?
I will never apologize for supporting programs to end homelessness in this community and I continue and will continue, as long as I live, to work for them. The real estate transfer tax was one proposal. It came actually from a city bureau that we put this on the ballot. We didn't have to put it on the ballot. We referred it to the ballot so that people would have their choice to vote for it and I want to add that the real estate transfer tax is in effect today. The legislature approved the tax and it goes to assessment and taxation. So, people in effect have already are paying this tax and there was certainly no public outcry about that. I did, as I always do, I advocated for a program I believed in. I gave voters an opportunity to vote on something. They rejected it and I'm continuing today trying to find solutions to the homeless problems of this community.
Commissioner Koch, do you have a final rebuttal?
My philosophy is that raising taxes without a vote of the public is an insult. It goes against the grain of those who are struggling so hard to maintain a decent life and to treasure those things which they have earned and those things they wish to earn in the future.
Thank you, Gretchen and Bob. Now, we will move on to the questions that were submitted in writing by City Club members. Those questions will be asked by board and program committee members. The first question will be addressed and answered by Commissioner Cifore, who will have one minute to respond. After that, Commissioner Koch, if he wishes, can take one minute for rebuttal. And our first questioner is Clark Worth. Oh, you are there.
Clark Worth, member of the program committee. Commissioner Cifore, Portland is in the early stages of preparing a strategic plan for city government. What major new direction for the city would you propose be incorporated in the plan?
Having just completed the strategic planning at the county, I feel very strongly that one of the things we missed in that process was focusing on our existing programs. Some of the most important issues for Multnomah County, the teen health centers, for example, were never addressed in our strategic planning process. So, I think if I had one issue, it would be not what are the new services or what are the new issues for the city, but how do they solidify and do a better job of the programs they're already involved in. There are major, major areas that need attention and I think my biggest concern is that sometimes we get so caught up in a process that we lose the substantive issues that are important to the community.
Commissioner Koch, do you wish to respond?
Well, the first thing our strategic planning process encompasses is a full and complete inventory of all city services and programs and as a baseline of information as we then go forward to look at even greater things beyond that, the partnerships and relationships that need to exist, city, county, regional, state, and even federal government to accomplish a better future.
The next question will be asked by Jean Demaster of Commissioner Koch. Jean?
Jean Demaster, program committee. Many changes will occur in Portland over the next decade. I'd like to ask, what is your vision for the city and what do you think that Portland should look like in the year 2000? And most importantly, what are the policies that need to be adopted to get us there?
How much time have I got?
You only have one minute on this, Bob.
Does it start when I begin? Well, strategic planning, obviously, is to assist us in doing that. I believe in a future of a productive, safe, clean, shiny community, one in which people can walk about their community and do business in their community without fear, one in which people feel a brotherhood with one another regardless of the diversity of the population, one in which the entire adult population of the city Portland begins to look at its children, all children, as their children.
Commissioner Cifore?
My vision would have safer neighborhoods with no abandoned housing. The growth would be managed. There would be housing developed near employment sites and new major employers. There would be transit systems that encourage people to get out of their cars and ride
After a question like that on which they had a minute to respond, I think I'm gonna recommend that both be put on our next study committee to help this brevity. The next question for Commissioner Cifore will come from Tom Ballmer.
These questions do get a little bit more specific. Commissioner Cifore, citizens were told that the Portland Center for the Performing Arts would be self-supporting, but things haven't quite turned out that way. How do you think the Portland Center for the Performing Arts should be funded?
I had early on, when Commissioner Blumenauer was at the county, we had discussed a process of consolidating all of the expo and convention center and performing arts facilities under a regional, regionally-supported system. And one of the keys to that, which has never been realized, was that the expo center would become a part of it. Currently, the expo center is the only revenue-generating facility of the group and I continue to believe that if we would get less territorial and more regional in our thinking, that we could in fact have a system of public services, the facility services that are self-supporting.
Mr. Koch?
Well, I would just, mild exception to that, Coliseum also generates a good chunk of change and has helped subsidize some of the poorer portions of that. Regional problem, regional solution, it was well, it was not very well planned. Obviously, realities hit us in the face. It doesn't work and I think we need to reassess the Performing Arts Center in terms of what is going to be the final split of public subsidy versus what can be gained through private entrepreneur partnership.
Ellen Heltzel, program committee. Commissioner Koch, my question concerns the city streets, namely one of them. Which will it be, Martin Luther King Boulevard or Union Avenue?
Recent events have told us that we have not listened enough to the people. That's an excellent example. Out of that came a great tragedy of human emotion that unfortunately, the city council has to assume responsibility for setting forth. We need to learn by that and not repeat that tragedy in the future.
I supported the name change to Martin Luther King Boulevard. I believe it should stay and I was fully prepared to campaign to help enlighten the rest of the citizenry of Portland on the subject.
Our next question for Commissioner Cifore from board member Pete Baer.
Commissioner Cifore, one of the things that the city has been criticized for in the past is the hiring and promoting of minorities, including women. If elected, what would you do to improve the city's performance in that area?
One of the biggest deterrents is not just the recruiting, but is in the internal promotion and advanceability of minorities and women. At the county, I have been the board liaison with a process to study pay equity and we are in the final throes. We hope of implementing this major change. I think the city has gotten bogged down because all they have done is the study. They did a very extensive $1 million pay point analysis of all city workers in 1984 and yet have not found, committed either the resources or the energy to implement that. It's difficult and it took working with the union, with management, and with the broad breadth of workers and I am looking forward to bringing my expertise on this subject to the city.
Commissioner Koch?
Well, I'm very proud to be the only commissioner, the only elected official on Portland City Council who for the, since being elected in 1986 and taking office in January 87, whose bureaus have either met or exceeded the city's goals every year. So, I think it can be done within the structure of combining both recruitment and very clear, implicit messages to the bureau heads and the, those who hire on a daily basis to fulfill that moral obligation that we have. that moral obligation that we have.
Our next question for Commissioner Koch from Pam Wilson.
Do you think that the lack of affordable, low-cost childcare is an issue for the city of Portland to address? If so, why?
Again, I'd like to speak with some pride to the fact that the only existing codified measure regarding childcare advancement in the last three years came from my office and the adoption of the Central City Plan, which gave additional space to buildings, office buildings that'll rise in the future for their agreeing to put in childcare centers for their employees. I also had the city of Portland Water Bureau study the issue of childcare and a possible placement in the Portland Building some two years ago. That was advanced to the city's Personnel Committee, which is currently under Mayor Bud Clark. They've not advanced it any further. We need to have partnership and set as an example with our city employees. I think that would be the best advance that we could take.
Commissioner Kefory?
One of the, one of the very first paying jobs I had was at the Metropolitan 4C, the old Coordinated Childcare Council in the early '70s, and was proud to work with Helen Gordon and some of her pioneering work. I think the issues are the same as they were then. We have to find a whole range of ways to encourage employers to provide daycare at their place of employment. We need to encourage it in building development, and certainly the city, as in many areas, though it doesn't have the legal responsibility, like the legislature does, for encouraging childcare and paying for it, it does have the moral responsibility to encourage it whenever possible.
Next question for Commissioner Kefory from Kathy Oxborough. Kathy?
The City Club recently conducted a study of funding for roads and transit in the metropolitan area. A constitutional amendment to allow the use of local gas taxes for mass transit will be on the primary election ballot. Do you support the amendment? Why or why not?
I absolutely support the amendment and have always supported public funding for mass transit.
Commissioner Koch?
I'd like to remind everybody that the amendment that we're going to support, and both of us support, is just to allow the people to vote. So I think that that's very important that we all turn out to do that. A great deal of careful study's been given. This is perhaps the most consistent approach to round out our share of the transportation dollars for the future. I think it's worthy of supporting. I think it just makes sense.
Our next question for Commissioner Koch will be from Clark Worth.
Commissioner Koch, Mayor Clark said recently that the city isn't getting its fair share of the local property tax dollar. Will you support a measure to increase taxes for the city?
Well, fortunately, in a political process where you have five separately-elected officials on a city council, you have more than room, you have more than enough ample room for disagreement of philosophy and approach. I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that we don't get our fair share. That's kind of a competitiveness that says that, let's gum and gobble up more of those dollars out there from the citizens as opposed to what needs to be done, and that's a very solid strategic reform in the entire property tax system, one in which can, in fact, return additional revenues to the city, can protect our much-needed school system and provide a solid base for the future for the young people, at the same time can bring into partnership those who use our services when they visit our city, when they work in our city, who are thus far exempt from any responsibility of providing those services.
I went to, I went to the School of Responsible Government when I was in the legislature and learned that you have to be able to raise the taxes to pay for the services you're going to provide, and it has evidently led to the labeling of me as a tax and spend person, but I believe it's a responsible position and that you have to be willing to stand up, to go to the voters for jail levies and other kinds of support, library levies, when those services are desperately needed. The key to financing local governments and getting us in a secure position is going to be state school finance reform. I'm hopeful that finally, after 20 years of worrying about this, that the movement is such that we're on the right track and that the legislature will, will take advantage of the public interest now and do something in 1991.
Next question for Commissioner Kefory from Jean Demaster. My apologies.
You have had a long career in public service. What unsung Portland hero or heroine along the way has most influenced you?
She's kind of unsung, and I was thinking about her as I wrote up the speech, and I mentioned her earlier today. It was Helen Gordon, and I, I think I learned a little bit of her, a little of her abrasiveness, perhaps, rubbed off on me along the way, because I still have visions of her in the state Capitol wheeling around in her wheelchair harassing people. It just didn't matter who, she would roll up and stop and start screeching at them about childcare. And sometimes I feel like, on some of the issues, the one that you and I work on together, the homelessness, it's kind of out of fad-ish now, out of fad now, and there isn't the attention that there was a few years ago, but I certainly hope that when my epitaph is written, that people remember me as a fighter like Helen Gordon.
I guess I shouldn't find it ironic that our heroes perhaps be people who approach things differently. I've been influenced by so many people in my life, there's no way in the world I could possibly list them all. But the hero of my life and the one who's provided the most guidance, has provided the open, loving heart of service to others, has been Jesus Christ.
Next question for Commissioner Koch from Tom Ballmer.
Mr. Koch, let's, let's be imaginative for a minute. Your best friend from out of town, out of state, has been here, has one day to spend with you in Portland. He, she has never been here before. Where would you take him or her?
First thing I would do is, I would try to arrange for a helicopter flight around our city. From that view is the most extraordinary view. And then take that person to some of those sites on the ground. I would take them to the Japanese Garden, take them, take that person to a spot out there on 82nd Avenue near the airport where we have wild parakeets in nests up in these marvelous trees. They're about this big and they're lime green. I would take that person to, to also down to inner northeast Portland and Old Town to show the diversity. Take that person to visit some of our older churches and synagogues. I think that that would round out a day, and I'd take that person to a place that's a little restaurant in lower southeast Portland, has the biggest hamburger in the entire city, and round out the day.
I think I'd first go for a long after-breakfast walk at Forest Park and be sure that we spent at least some time on or near the river. I would, if time allowed, run us up the gorge to Multnomah Falls and end with a dinnertime stroll through downtown Portland, showing how wonderfully organized our downtown system is.
It sounds to me, if anyone has an out-of-town friend, come right on up and get the places here. Our next question for Commissioner Kefory from Ellen Heltzel.
Commissioner Kefory, we all know how Rick Baumann stands on this question. How do you feel about strict control of assault weapons and cheap handguns?
I would like to ban assault weapons and cheap handguns.
Why do I suspect I'm not going to be able to match that? The issue, there's no question that we would all like to see those kinds of weapons, particularly out of the hands of the criminals and those who terrorize our community. That's the real issue. The issue, again, has to come back to the responsibility of the human behavior. We will never, ever be able to outlaw every potential possible weapon that can be used in violence. We've got to recognize the solution has to hit home on the character and the respect and responsibility of our citizenry.
Our next question for Commissioner Koch from Pete Baer. Pete?
Commissioner Koch, should the city extend employee benefits to the partners of gays and lesbians employed by the city?
Boy, this is a ticklish one, isn't it? I think we're getting into the area of special privileges here. So cautious approach is appropriate approach. I've never really looked at the issue. It was asked to me the first time a few days ago, and I was astounded that the question was even being asked. The bottom line here comes down to dollars, and what is it going to cost the citizens? And are the citizens responsible? Or are they going to feel that it's responsible to spend those dollars in that way? If it's such a good thing to do, how come private industry isn't doing it? Is my first question. So I think if you're going to talk about this kind of question, it's the kind of question that ultimately would have to go to the voters for their, for their decision.
Commissioner Kefory?
Government's in a position of leading the way in some of these critical issues, and I think some of our early policies about nondiscrimination were, in fact, first passed by government. So I think, one, we have an obligation to be the leaders and not always wait for someone else to take the first step. Secondly, the city benefits currently are extended to unmarried partners of the opposite sex. Why in the world there is discrimination against long-term gay and lesbian relationships is beyond me. I certainly would support that change in the city policy.
Next question for Commissioner Kefory from Pam Wilson.
Do you believe that Portland's commission form of government is effective? If so, why? And can it be improved? If not, why not? And which form would you favor?
I have gone to the county charter commission urging them to adopt the county manager form of government, and in this instance, I line up with the Chamber of Commerce report. I do believe that there is a need to, we have professional managers hired by each of the commissioners. I think a city manager could coordinate that and have the elected people work on policy matters. I think this, as I pointed out earlier, is one of the reasons I'm running for this seat on the Portland City Council, because I think the system does not allow us to have people in that position who are good managers frequently.
Commissioner Koch?
I support the current system, and I've worked for several other kinds as a city, as a public employee. Perhaps the largest strength of the current system is, is that no matter who you are as a citizen, no matter what portion of our community you come from, what your lifestyle or beliefs are, that the odds are you're going to find one out of five of those people on that city council is going to care about you and your problem and be prepared to take direct action. That is not true in any other form of city government anywhere in the United States.
Next question for Commissioner Koch from Kathy Oxborough.
With all the discussion over potential restructuring in higher education, what would you recommend to improve institutional and program access to post-secondary education in the Portland area?
Well, I think we've done a great deal in terms of affording opportunities for access through our community colleges, Portland State University, University of Portland, and many others. The, and we have a lot of solid people who are part of that process and focused narrowly upon that. I think that I believe, and my, my personal belief is in lifelong education, that we're constantly learning, becoming better as human beings, and shaping ourselves to do better in the future. I'm not certainly, certain what else can be done of the cost and exposure and advertisement and promotion of those opportunities that are structured for the needs of those people and not trying to put round people into square holes.
I'm welcoming the, the look at higher education in the metropolitan area during my years in the legislature. I remember a very competitive and sad feeling that Portland somehow and Portland State University were not recognized for the, as a leadership school. They were, they were always kind of the ugly stepchild of, of higher education, and I think this is an attempt, whether the name is the same or however the system is defined, to get Portland in a position to have a major urban university here. I think that is the most important step we need to take and then begin to develop the major programs for post-secondary work. Journalism comes immediately to mind. That the journalism school is not located in, in the major metropolitan area seems very bizarre. Maybe with a new woman president, things will get done there.
As a U of O alum, there's reasons for that journalism school. Clark Worth, the next question for Commissioner Kefory.
Commissioner Kefory, what does Portland need to do to attract more corporate headquarters?
I think Portland probably is, the city itself isn't in a position to do as much as maybe the legislature, and hopefully if we get our tax system redefined so that local property taxes are supporting local services and not education as well, we'll, we'll be in a better path. I think we have an excellent economic development arm, and I think, I guess I would approach it a bit cautiously. I think we need to plan carefully and decide where we want business to come. Are they willing to develop housing near their place of employment for their workers? Maybe throw in a daycare center here and there, but let's be careful as we court outside development and make sure we have a good plan for the future.
Commissioner Koch?
In my discussions with the business people in our community, the ones who, in fact, deal with these potential investors in our community moving corporate headquarters, I can tell you what I hear consistently from them. If we want to attract more, we need a zero tolerance for crime in this city. We need more jails. We need cleaner neighborhoods. We need to, we need to take firm stand that when people walk down through our downtown or neighborhoods, they're not going to be intruded upon, they're not going to be attacked or harassed, that they can walk without fear. That is the missing component for the future.
Our last question from the program committee will come from Jean Demaster to Commissioner Koch.
The 1990s have been called the decade of the environment. What new environmental initiatives do you plan to introduce?
I tend to fully, as I have for three years, support the Audubon's notion and concept of an urban forest and an urban wildlife refuge. I think that that's one of the most outstanding, clear visions that I've ever seen. I want to continue the pattern that I have for three years in office of seizing every opportunity to leverage a cleaner, more enhanced environment, one which is protected, one which, one which every citizen can enjoy.
I think the environmental protection is one of, one of the areas that I feel strongly the current incumbent has, has dropped the ball. One of the critical pieces in the, in the jurisdiction of the city is the, is the recycling and the pickup, and I think the fact that the city council is having to go back and redo that whole process now is testimony to the fact that it was not done properly several years ago. I believe that environmental protection is going to take, take a great leap forward in source prohibition and source reduction of materials. As I mentioned in my opening, things like disposable diapers and the unnecessary packaging. The city has to get aggressive about setting standards here. I think the polystyrene foam ban that my opponent ended up voting against is an absolutely critical example of how we're going to move ahead in this arena.
Now, we will have the last question from each candidate to the other. Commissioner Kefory will first ask Commissioner Koch a question and have an opportunity for a short rebuttal. Gretchen?
This publication from your campaign refers to me as public enemy number one and someone who helps criminals in our community. You know that I have worked to double the jail space in Multnomah County in the last five years. Why should voters trust what you say when you're so free and loose with the truth?
Beginning with, you won't see my signature on it, but there's nothing in that that I disagree with. In fact, if the business community who worked so hard to provide additional jail space in this county were to, in fact, step forward and publicly assume responsibility telling people the truth, you'd find out that this person had to be drugged, kicking and screaming to every ballot poll. Also, the fact that the county for months searched for a jail site for the eminence, it wasn't the county that solved the problem, it was Bob Koch who advanced the concept for $1 to provide free space for the eminence jailer, it probably still wouldn't be built.
Commissioner Kefory, do you have a rebuttal?
I, I think voters in this community have come to expect truthfulness, and they want campaigns to be run based on the truth. I have worked hard for jail space for the entire five and a half years I've been on the Multnomah County Commission, and nobody has ever drugged me kicking and screaming very many places. very many places.
Commissioner Koch, your last question of Commissioner Kefory.
I don't know if I want to be standing between these two. I think we're both just grateful it's just about over. You talked about banning the foam, styrofoam, as being a great advancement. Why is it then, when the county had their opportunity, they settled on recycling instead of banning?
One reason was we didn't have three votes to ban it. The second reason, and less important, was that we decided, when we couldn't get three votes to ban it, that we would move ahead and at least have the counterbalance of a system at the county that did try the recycling. We were under the ordinance to have a system in place by April 1st and right now what we have is a proposed system. I'm going to be watching very, very closely to see whether in fact this recycling system works and when we review this in the next few months, we will have more information about that, but I'm a realist and when you don't have three votes, you move on to another proposal.
Do you have a rebuttal, Commissioner Koch?
So much for being persuasive of the things you feel so strongly about. The fact of the matter is, is that banning foam was an ecological disaster. It encouraged and increased the amount of dioxins into our waterways, the amount of chemicals into our air at the paper plants, the energy utilized. It in fact then puts paper in the marketplace which cannot be recycled, which ends up then loading those dyes and dioxins and other chemicals into our environment. It's an ecological disaster, it was a mistake, and it shouldn't have happened.
We're now at the final stage of the debate where each candidate will give a three-minute closing presentation. I hear sighs from both sides of the podium here. It's probably only about 110 degrees up here, so if we're all sweating, it isn't because we're particularly nervous, but the lights are giving us a wonderful tan. On the first closing statement will be Commissioner Koch. Bob?
For three-plus years, I've worked very, very hard for the public's priorities in public safety, clean environments, sound financial management, and particularly an open government. Some of the programs that I have advanced that are very successful are City Watch, a program where we've taken 5,000 public and private employees, turned them into be good watchers of crime to take direct action. We have many heroes out of that program. Court Watch, which has taken citizens out of affected neighborhoods who heretofore were frustrated and angry that the system didn't understand it, taken them through an educational process and experience over 115 times into the courts of our county and our city with positive, productive, constructive results. Closing down drug houses is an advancement that I'm very proud to have taken both a personal and a cooperative role in. Project Payback, a county program that was languishing, a program that provides work for juvenile delinquents through the court system, where 60% of what they made goes back for victim restitution, a positive work experience for kids who've never worked before in their life. The county was languishing. I went out and I struck all kinds of agreements with private industry and private business and some public agencies in the city to provide that program vitality it needed and put those kids to work and the blessings of many kids who've gone through that program and turned into productive citizens cannot be denied. Clean Waterways program is a program I started in 1987. 1987 spring, I sat down with Mike Hulk of Audubon, a person I didn't know, and laid it all out. And if he were here today, then he would say Bob made, Bob made good on his promises. Financial management, saved over $5 million in the Bureau of General Services, not counting the millions of dollars in direct savings to the Water Bureau through water efficiency and water conservation today and tomorrow and deferring costs for the future. Attending meetings, hundreds and hundreds of community meetings, constantly listening, sharpening my focus, caring with an open, loving heart, someone learning to listen and listen well, an effort that I continue to, to take to my heart and to work on. I have the momentum, I have the energy, I have the drive to take Portland's into the 90s. I've earned the support of the electorate. Government is the people's business. My goal is satisfy customers. It's a very simple concept and belief. Staying close to the customer, translating their needs into visions for the future. I've done that and Portland needs Bob Koch for continuing better future. Particularly important is also a need for a balance on the city council, diversity of views and experiences. We have taken on great steps forward. Don't upset the balance tomorrow. Regional and state and national teamwork is things that I've demonstrated time after time on, on the solid waste issues where I served on the Regional Solid Waste Committee and in fact, we were able to shape a better future for solid waste where there was no plan before, as well as provide dollars for neighborhood enhancement for citizens to make decisions about their neighborhoods for the future. I'm proud of what I've done, I've loved what I've done, I've learned a great deal. I love the people of this city and I'd like another four years to demonstrate that love. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Koch. And now Commissioner Kefory, your closing statement.
Quote, "Portland needs professional management and leadership. We want to provide quality cooperation between citizens and government. Portland wants accountability in city council. Portland deserves a change." Those were Bob's words four years ago and I incorporate them as my words to you today. Being a leader means understanding complexity of issues, making tough choices, and pulling people together to get things done. I'm running because of a long record of public service in the legislature and at Multnomah County where I have worked well with my colleagues and members of many diverse communities, the business community on the Leaders Roundtable, Local 88 of the Public Employees Union on our pay equity implementation, and many, many neighborhood groups. I have never ducked on tough issues like gun control, abortion, gay rights, and teen health centers. I have a record of getting things done, balancing jail space with drug and alcohol treatment. On May 15th, you have the power to put a strong and effective leader on the Portland City Council. I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank both Commissioner Kefory and Commissioner Koch. They were clearly well-prepared for their participation today. I'd also like to thank the Program Committee for screening and presenting the many questions that we had and a special thanks to Jackie Harper who kept almost all of us on time with the exception of me and we are adjourned.